Recording in progress.
I now call the February 21st, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order at nine o'clock. If you can please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are participating remotely, please mute your microphone. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. City Clerk, if you can please call the roll.
Mayor Lopez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Larios.
Here.
Councilmember Merlo.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move Ibarra.
I'll second Larios.
Motion by Councilmember Ibarra, seconded by Mayor Protem Larios to approve the agenda. I'll call the roll. Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Larios?
Yes.
Councilmember Merlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will now go on to... If you would like, I'm sorry, we will now go on to public comments from members of the audience. If you would like to provide public comment, please come to the podium or click the Raise Hand button on Zoom. Do we have any hands on Zoom?
There are none.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, we will now go on to presentations. We will now go to item, Agenda Item Number One is a proclamation recognizing retired City Councilmember William Bill Davis. City Clerk Pope will present the item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Vernon, commending William J. Davis for his many years of service to the city. I guess he's coming.
Okay.
Should we?
I don't know.
Should we wait? Should we go on to Item Number Two and then come back to the proclamation?
Yeah, let's do that.
Sure.
Okay, let's go on to Agenda Item Number Two. And then we'll come back to Agenda Item Number One. Agenda Item Number Two is a presentation on, I'm sorry, His Employee Service Pin Awards for January. Human Resources Director Earl will present the item.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the City Council. During the month of January, we had three employees achieve service milestones with the city. We have one present this morning. We'd like to recognize Joaquin Leon for 15 years of service. Joaquin, if you could come forward. Joaquin was hired as an Assistant Finance Director in the Finance Department on January 28th, 2008, and currently holds the position of Deputy City Treasurer since January of 2010. Please join me in congratulating Joaquin on 15 years of service.
We go back to Item Number One?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is a proclamation of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Vernon, commending William J. Davis for his many years of service to the city. Whereas William J., Bill Davis, has been a resident of the City of Vernon since 1970 and faithfully served his fellow citizens in the city for over 40 years in his capacity as a council member. And whereas, after four decades of public service, Bill Davis retired from the City of Vernon effective December 19th, 2022. And whereas, Bill Davis was initially appointed to fill a vacant seat for an unexpired term on the Vernon City Council on May 26th, 1981, and was subsequently appointed or elected to serve full terms on February 14th, 1984, April 12th, 1988, February 24th, 1992, February 6th, 1996, February 1st, 2000, February 4th, 2004, January 22nd, 2008, June 2nd, 2009, April 9th, 2013, and a final five-year term on April 10th, 2018. And whereas, during his tenure on the City Council, Bill Davis served as Mayor of the City of Vernon from October 23rd, 2012 through April 16th, 2013, and again from April 19th, 2016 through April 18th, 2017, and served as Mayor Protem at various points throughout his time as an elected official. And whereas, Bill Davis represented the community and the city on various area organizations, including the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts, Gateway Cities Council of Governments, Central Basin Water Association, Southern California Association of Governments, and California Contract Cities Association. And whereas, as a member of the Vernon City Council, Bill Davis also served as a member of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, Oversight Board of the Successor Agency, Board of Library Trustees for the City of Vernon, and the Vernon Business and Industry Commission. And whereas, Bill Davis has served as a pillar of strength for the community, steadfast in his commitment to the city's transparency and good governance goals. And whereas, during his long and distinguished career with the City of Vernon, Bill Davis has won the deepest respect of his colleagues through his dedication, leadership, and exceptional public service. And whereas, it is an honor to express our appreciation to Bill Davis for his exemplary service to the City of Vernon, and wish Mr. Davis good health upon his retirement and for continued success in life's pursuits. Now therefore, the mayor and City Council of the City of Vernon, on behalf of its employees, residents, and businesses, hereby commend and thank William J. Davis for his years of service to the city. This proclamation is presented by the Honorable Mayor Letizia Lopez for and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Vernon this 21st day of February 2023. Mayor, in addition, Senator, State Senator Maria Elena Derazo sent a certificate of recognition that I will read. This is Senate Certificate of Recognition presented to Councilmember William Bill Davis. I would like to thank you for faithfully serving your fellow citizens in the City of Vernon for over 40 years. Your commitment and dedication to public service played a key role in setting the City of Vernon on a path towards reform that focused on transparency and the implementation of good governance policies. Best wishes in your future endeavors. February 21st, 2023. State Senator Maria Elena Derazo, 26th District. In addition, we have representatives from the Office of LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn and Assemblymember Miguel Santiago and the mayor from the City of Bell to present, to recognize retired Councilmember Davis. If you just want to stay there for a moment.
Mr. Frank Garcia, I'm actually the mayor of Haywood. Brought you this certificate just for your retirement. Thank you for all your years of service. You know, it's people like you who inspire young elected officials like us to serve, and I thank you for all your service. Thank you, sir. Enjoy your retirement.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Councilmember Davis-Bill. I'm John Peraz. I'm with the Office of Congressman Garcia, your new member. And we do have a certificate of, well, not a certificate because it's a really nice plaque, but recognizing your service to the City of Vernon. I'll go ahead and read it. It's a congressional recognition presented to you, William Bill Davis, in honor of your service to the City of Vernon as a member of the City Council. On behalf of the U.S. House of Representatives, I commend you for serving your community for 41 years as an elected official. Your experience and love of your city has ensured the success of your community. I wish you and your family all the best on the occasion of your retirement. Signed this 21st day of February 2023, a member of Congress for the 42nd District, Robert Garcia.
Good morning. My name is Matthew Ruiz. I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Miguel Santiago, and I would like to give you this certificate on his behalf. I'm going to go ahead and read what it says. "On behalf of the California State Legislature in the 54th Assembly District, I commend you for your unwavering dedication, loyalty, and commitment to the community of Vernon. Thank you for 40 years of outstanding leadership in public service. Through civic engagement and community partnership, you are an influential component in the lives of many. May your determination, integrity, and character serve as an example to others and make an impact as you have. Congratulations on your retirement and best wishes on your future endeavors and continued success." Thank you.
There's anyone else here that would like to come up? I think that's it. Thank you.
We will now take a 15-minute recess to enjoy refreshments in the lobby.
Recording stopped.
You can reconvene in the meeting if you want to. Do you want to re? I know. I know. I guess he's coming.
Should we wait? Should we go on to Item Number Two and then come back to the proclamation? Yeah, let's do that. Sure. Okay, let's go on to Agenda Item Number Two. Um, and then we'll come back to Agenda Item Number One. Agenda Item Number Two is a presentation on, I'm sorry, His Employee Service Pin Awards for January. Human Resources Director Earl will present the item.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the City Council. During the month of January, we had three employees achieve service milestones with the city. Uh, we have one present this morning. We'd like to recognize Joaquin Leon for 15 years of service. Joaquin, if you could come forward. Joaquin was hired as an Assistant Finance Director in the Finance Department on January 28th, 2008, and currently holds the position of Deputy City Treasurer since January of 2010. Please join me in congratulating Joaquin on 15 years of service.
We are now back in session. We will go back to Item Number One. If we would like, if anyone would like to now take public, I'll now take public comments from the members of the audience. If you would like to provide public comment, please come to the podium or click the Raise Hand button on Zoom. We do have a public comment. Please state your name and business affiliation, if any, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I'll really try. Good morning, Council. My name is Marisa O'Gan with the Vernon Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to say a few words about Bill Davis, who's retiring. And I just, on behalf of the Board of Directors and the entire business community and me personally, I wanted just to congratulate you and thank you for your over 45, did you hit 45 years of service? And, you know, serving is a, is a public service. It's a sacrifice. And you sacrificed a lot of your life with your family and your girls to serve in Vernon. And it's been a pleasure working with you. And frankly, you've been our strongest reform leader in Vernon over the past years. And we appreciate you so much for stepping up to do the right thing. You, you made decisions at critical points in our history of rebuilding this city to, 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 to make sure that the reforms were, were here and solid in our city. And I'll give one example that many of you may not even know, or some of us have forgotten. But there was a real critical point where we had a couple council members that were still, we were doing all these reforms, and the couple council members did not want, they wanted a vote to roll back the reforms. And they didn't have a quorum, and they were struggling, or they, they did have a quorum, but they were really struggling. And Bill Davis left his vacation in Europe, his family vacation. He flew back here and surprised some of those council members and voted to make sure those reforms stuck. That's the kind of man he's been. And so I just want to thank you for, for doing that for all of us. You've empowered residents. You've walked. You've empowered and encouraged them to run for office. You've walked even last year with us. And so you've been a true champion and our strongest reform leader. And so I just thank you for everything and thank Bracey for, for allowing her, your husband to serve. And I just wish you all the best and enjoy your retirement with your girls and Bracey, your wife. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now go on to Agenda Item Number Three is a presentation on Opportunities for Clean Hydrogen. General Manager for Public Utilities, Desmond Berry, will present this item.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. This morning, we have a presentation on clean hydrogen. One of the utility's goals is to explore evolving technologies and solutions to address the challenges caused by greenhouse gas emissions and to do our part to create a sustainable future. The consultant that I'm about to introduce, Mr. Peter, Peter Herbisch from Port Canaveral, has done an assessment of recent developments on hydrogen. His analysis is separate and outside of the utility staff, primarily given the newness of clean hydrogen and the discussion around its use, but recognizing there haven't been an abundance of real-world applications yet. A handful of projects are in their infancy stages of development. But research on this technology is helpful because the reality is there's a significant new funding available, and the utility would like to better understand how it can be utilized and integrated with possible fuel source solutions. With that, let me now turn it over to Mr. Herbisch.
Morning. Thank you, Todd. Good morning, Mayor and the members of the Vernon City Council. I'd like to start off the first page that you see in front of you with a couple dates that are of interest. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a couple dates that I find of interest. 1766, cabinetist's discovery of hydrogen was simply, the first time the gas he isolated was recognized as a unique element. Hydrogen was, was first created by Robert Boyle and others, but they failed to recognize this flammable gas as an element. 1874, as early as, 1874, Mysterious Island, Jules Verne wrote. I believe that water will be someday be employed as a fuel and that hydrogen and oxygen will singly be used together will be the coal of the future. 1905 is very interesting. Canada's pioneer in hydrogen and hydrogen energy technology was Alexander Thomas Stewart. While employed in 1905 as a summer student at Electric Chemical Plant in Niagara Falls, New York, he conceived the opportunity for electrolysis of water to produce hydrogen and oxygen by interestingly absorbed surface electricity at all times when supply exceeded demand. In '71, a hydrogen and common was coined by H.R. Linden at the Institute of Gas Technology. He stated fossil fuels are inexpensive, but their combustion leads to consequences that require the atmosphere to assimilate them. In the 1970s, in the second half of the 1970s, I was working for Fluorine Irvine. That would drive between my home and Lake Forest and fluor engineers in Irvine. Sometimes it was difficult to make out the poles on the five due to smog. Had to slow down to visibility. A lot better now in '23, but hydrogen is a fuel to take it a step further. The opportunities are in place for Vernon. The information is very quick and forthcoming. As of yesterday, in 2023, February 16th, Frankfurt in Reuters, it's now become apparent to most market observers that the energy supply in Germany and Europe is going to fundamentally change. Instead of fossil fuels, it'll be up to renewable energy sources to keep the economy and society moving. Given what we know today, hydrogen will be paramount to this transformation process since there is no way of linking up the various parts of the energy ecosystem without recourse to hydrogen.
But research on this technology is helpful because the reality is there's a significant new funding available, and the utility would like to better understand how it can be utilized and integrated with possible fuel source solutions. With that, let me now turn it over to Mr. Herbis.
Morning. Thank you, Todd. Good morning, Mayor and the members of the Vernon City Council. I'd like to start off the first page that you see in front of you with a couple dates that are of interest. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a couple dates that I find of interest. Seventeen sixty-six, cabinet's discovery of hydrogen was simply, the first time the gas he isolated was recognized as a unique element. Hydrogen was, was first created by Robert Boyle and others, but they failed to recognize this flammable gases element. Eighteen seventy-four, as early as eighteen seventy-four, mysterious island, Jules Verne wrote. I believe that water will be someday be employed as a fuel and that hydrogen and oxygen will singly be used. Together will be the coal of the future. Nineteen oh five is very interesting. Canada's, Canada's pioneer in hydrogen and hydrogen energy technology was Alexander Thomas Stewart, while employed in nineteen oh five as a summer student at electrochemical plant in Niagara Falls, New York. He conceived the opportunity for electrolysis of water to produce hydrogen and oxygen by interestingly absorbed surface electricity at all times when supply exceeded demand. In seventy-one, a hydrogen and common was coined by H.R. Linden at the Institute of Gas Technology. He stated fossil fuels are inexpensive, but their combustion leads to consequences that require the atmosphere to assimilate them. In the nineteen seventies, in the second half of the nineteen seventies, I was working for Flora and Irvine, and that would drive between my home and Lake Forest and Flora Engineers and Irvine. Sometimes it was difficult to make out the poles on the five due to smog, had to slow down to visibility. A lot better now in twenty-three, but hydrogen is a fuel to take it a step further. The opportunities are in place for Vernon. The information is very quick and forthcoming. As of yesterday, in twenty twenty-three, February sixteen, Frankfurt and Reuters. It's now become apparent to most market observers that the energy supply in Germany and Europe is going to fundamentally change. Instead of fossil fuels, it will be up to renewable energy sources to keep the economy and society moving. Given what we know today, hydrogen will be paramount to this transformation process since there is no way of linking up the various parts of the energy ecosystem without recourse to hydrogen. Slide two, please. There. Could you go back one slide, please? Thank you. Slide two. The climate crisis requires investing in low-carbon and zero-carbon solutions to achieve California's carbon neutrality goals. This includes hydrogen, which has the potential to help the state reduce emissions from the transportation sector, meet the unique needs of industrial and commercial uses, and be used as a fuel for generation and energy storage. A special interest is green hydrogen as it is a clean energy source that emits only water vapor, oxygen, and traces of NOx from the combustion air, which contains seventy-eight percent nitrogen and twenty-one percent oxygen, and it does this at higher firing temperatures. The electrolyzer electricity for green hydrogen is supplied by renewables, solar, wind, nuclear, and hydro. The emitted NOx will be equal to or less than current natural gas burner technologies, and the after treatment of exhaust gas will may be lower than the restrictive EPA and SEAQMD guidelines coming out in twenty-two and twenty-three. That's data from the DOE Office of Energy Efficiency or Renewable Energy Hydrogen and Fuel Technology Seminar, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The pros. Sustainable green hydrogen does not emit polluting gases either during combustion or during generation. Storeable hydrogen is easy to store, which allows it to be used subsequently for other purposes and at times other than immediately after its production. Versatility. Green hydrogen can be transformed into electricity and used for commercial, industrial, or mobility purposes. Cons. The high cost. Energy from renewable sources, which are necessary for green hydrogen production, are more expensive. Currently, the cost to generate a kilogram of hydrogen is five to six dollars. The Department of Energy's goal is supporting technology and research to reduce the cost to one dollar per kilogram in one decade, which is called the one-one-one plan. High energy consumption, the production of green hydrogen in particular, requires more energy than other fuels. Safety concerns. Hydrogen is a highly volatile and flammable element like natural gas, and extensive safety measures are required to prevent leakage and explosions. Of interest, in nineteen thirty-seven, the Hindenburg disaster was caused by a spark igniting the flammable materials of the structure and not the hydrogen itself. U.S. refineries today use one point three-three billion standard cubic hydrogen every single day to remove sulfur compounds from gasoline, diesel, and other products that we use in our transportation and car. Containment solutions therefore exist to prevent leakage in the equipment. This is not new science. Slide three, please. I've reduced the items in slide three, which are recommended by the, the CEC in a June twenty-twenty-one publication. The ones I suggest that would be apropos for the city at this time would be transportation uses, heat uses, industrial processing, energy storage, and electricity generation. Of course, there may be many more, but at this particular times, they're the ones that stand out to myself. Slide number four, please. Available funding. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, AKA the bipartisan infrastructure law, was signed into law by President Biden on November the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The law authorizes one point two trillion dollars for transportation and infrastructure spending with five hundred and fifty billion of that going toward new investments and programs, which will definitely affect the amount of NOx from burner technology and the issues that some people might believe exist with hydrogen in piping systems. The CEC on December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two approved an unprecedented two-point-nine-billion-dollar investment plan that accelerates California's electric vehicle charging and hydrogen-fueling electric vehicle goals. This is the largest ever funding which focuses on charging and refueling for clean trucks and buses. The funds will support deployment of thousands of zero-emission trucks, school buses, and transport transit buses to deliver clean air benefits to communities hit hardest by the impacts of pollution from medium and heavy-duty vehicles. This would include disadvantaged communities. Slide number five, please. Possibilities of Vernon. The city is unique in that hydrogen-fueling stations for automobiles have a secondary importance since battery-charging stations are in place for EV automobiles. The current trend with automobiles is that batteries are more cost-competitive than hydrogen-fuel electric cars. However, the charge time for batteries may be measured in hours, whereas the charge time for hydrogen-fuel electric cars is minutes. But the cost for EV is less per charge, and the size of the EV battery meets the design load capacity of the automobile without major design modifications. The majority of hydrogen fuel cells are concentrated on the west coast of Florida, of west coast of California, I'm sorry. This will prove to be a novelty shared only by Californians. In the auto industry, battery industries, batteries will not be faced with a marketing challenge. Hydrogen fuel cells will not replace them. The trucking, public transformation, and train industry, however, is moving to hydrogen fuel cells and away from storage batteries because they can take the load increase. The productive hydrogen within a city is favored for several reasons. One, there is existing source of water, which is what supplies MGS. Water purification technologies are available to generate ultra-pure water, which feeds electrolyzers, which are the source of the hydrogen. Conservation of water. Zero liquid discharge technology is available to treat the purification process, discharge water, which may be recycled and returned to the system for use and not become a waste product by up to eighty-nine percent. Westinghouse, which was brought by its bulk by Siemens, introduced the use of its technology in combined-cycle plants in the nineties. I was a part of it. We use it on several projects. This eliminates a lot of the issues that people have introduced about contributing to the drought. The water is recycled and saved. The city has the opportunity to reclaim and recycle processed water, not contribute to the drought. There should be available land in the city for production, compressed hydrogen, and liquefied cryogenic hydrogen storage. After treatment of exhaust gas NOx through selective catalytic reduction is in place in the current figure, configuration of MGS. It may be expanded to some degree. This is Siemens twenty-twenty-two. Based on the, on the subject of that, it's possible that we won't burn hydrogen in MGS at up to ten percent. Selective catalytic reduction is a means of converting nitrogen oxides, also referred to as NOx, with the aid of a catalyst, into diatomic nitrogen and return it to the atmosphere and water. Slide number six, please. The two, the two two thousand and one vintage S G D eight-hundred gas turbines which drive MGS are widely used for combined-cycle plant installations and are capable of fuel flexibility, including hydrogen, without a maintenance impact, or Siemens twenty-twenty-two. The MGS turbines in place now could fire up to ten percent hydrogen without significant plant modifications for a CO2 reduction of two-point-seven percent. The current plant configuration cannot fire very much above ten percent, and a major rebuild would be required to do so, again, Siemens twenty-twenty-two. The two H cup Gonzalez units fueling should be available, evaluated for hydrogen-natural gas blending. They could be two very good candidates for burning in with natural gas. Slide number seven, please. City utilities pursuing hydrogen. On September eighth, twenty twenty-two, San Diego Gas and Electric submitted a proposal to the CPUC to develop and implement a hydrogen blending project in UCSD campus. This demonstration project will assess the feasibility of blending hydrogen into the natural gas distribution system to help achieve regional and state decarbonization and climate goals. UCSD and SDG and E are collaborating on this project. It demonstrates that hydrogen can be safely and effectively blended into the natural gas distribution system, resulting in reduced consumption of fossil fuels and greenhouse gas emissions. The project will assess the amount of hydrogen up to a maximum of twenty percent by volume that can be blended into the natural gas stream without any, any impact to typical equipment and materials found in California's gas infrastructure. Detailed data will be collected by SDG and E regarding operational performance and the impact on the materials. The findings will be utilized to inform the CPUC and other stakeholders in the development of a system-wide hydrogen blending standard. Arches. The Port of Long Beach joined the Alliance for Renewable Clean Energy Systems, hence Arches, in partnership with the Government's Office of Business and Economic Development, Go Biz. A public-private partnership formed to help capture newly available federal funding to build the framework for a California renewable clean hydrogen hub. Arches will serve as the lead applicant for California's bid to win funding for a hydrogen hub under the U.S. Department of Energy Regional Clean Hydrogen Hubs, H2 Hubs program, which is funded by the bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law. Last slide. Natural gas and fueling gas turbines to general electricity should not be limited completely, but used as a blend with hydrogen to reduce emissions until at least twenty fifty. There's discussions where, that I hear in the news and literature where people believe hydrogen is just going to replace natural gas. This is not true science, and the research doesn't prove this either. It's a blending component to help reduce the CO2 footprint, but not overtake the complete use of natural gas, so there's no, no concern there. Until twenty fifty, when the technology and hydrogen advancements allow gas turbines in the hydrogen infrastructure to support those fueling. At the present time, there is not enough hydrogen production in the United States to support hundred-percent gas turbine operations. Research in combustion technology can reduce NOx emissions to at least as low as burning natural gas and lower to meet the new stringent EPA and SEAQMD standards. Hydrogen fuel technology will replace batteries with the exceptions of automobiles and small pickups. Hydrogen generation costs will approach one dollar per kilogram in the next decade. These are exciting times indeed for the city of Vernon. Thank you for your time. Back to you, Todd.
Thank you, Peter. Did council have any questions for Mr. Herbis on this study or any general question?
So I think the utility itself will be looking at different alternative measures they can take in to utilize hydrogen in the future. And as you are aware, we do have a potential customer that may be coming into Vernon that will be utilizing hydrogen here in Vernon. And so I've tasked the utility to please evaluate all different types of projects that can utilize this technology. And I believe we are even looking into how it can be utilized at the plant here in Vernon, so. We'll keep you updated. Today's presentation was information-only, just to keep you up to speed to what's going on with hydrogen and the potential for the city, but we will look at all alternatives in the near future, and, and then also evaluate cost, because that's, that's going to be important to us. But thank you for taking the time to put this together, Peter, and excellent job, and thanks, Todd, and continue to please evaluate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now go on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar may be approved with one motion. Items may be removed from the consent calendar by any member of the council. Those items removed will be considered immediately after the consent calendar. Does council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Um, I don't want to pull an item, excuse me. However, I would like to abstain from voting on item number eleven due to my current resident.
Okay. Are there any public comments for the consent calendar? May I have a motion for the consent calendar, item numbers four through eleven?
I'll second Merlo. Motion by Councilmember Ibarra, seconded by Councilmember Merlo to approve the consent calendar, noting the abstention from Mayor Protem Larios on item number eleven. I'll call the roll. Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Larios?
Yes.
Councilmember Merlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now go on to oral reports. City Administrator Fandino, do you have a report?
Uh, yes, I do. The city of Vernon's Public Health Department, in partnership with the Wellness Equity Alliance, will be seeking community input for the community health needs assessment. Uh, in the coming weeks, residents may see WEA staff visiting Vernon neighborhoods to conduct direct outreach and inform residents about its series of planned focus group meetings. Uh, please encourage your neighbors to participate. Once available, information on the focus groups will be posted on the city's website. Uh, the city of Vernon is also updating its sustainability plan and needs input from those that live, work, and volunteer here in Vernon. A sustainability survey will be made available to the city's website and distributed to Vernon residents and businesses in the next couple weeks. The feedback received will help us update the city's sustainability plan as we work to conserve resources and promote healthy environment for current residents and workforce as well as future generations. Uh, the Vernon-based nonprofit organization Derby Dolls is hosting a Bingo Night fundraiser on Saturday, February twenty-fifth at six-thirty P.M. Concessions will be available, and raffle tickets for fun, family, friend, prizes will be sold throughout the night and attendees. If interested, tickets and more information are available at the Derby Dolls website, derbydolls.com. Uh, the next bulky item pickup for Vernon residents is scheduled for Monday, March sixth. Residents may place items on the curbside the night before, and the pickup crews will do the rest. Uh, please remember that residents may contact Public Works at any time when they have bulky items to discard. Uh, staff will coordinate with the individual residents for a convenient time of the removal. Um, March twenty-third, our annual spring event will be held at the City Hall lawn. More, more details will be available soon, and a flyer will be distributed in the next coming weeks. And then the Vernon Job Fair will, because of the success in the previous Job Fair events, uh, staff is planning another, uh, Job Fair for Thursday, April sixth. Outreach to local business will begin in the next coming weeks. More announcements will be coming as details of the event are to be determined. And that's all I have for oral reports.
Thank you. Are there any reports from council? We will now go on to recess to close session for agenda item number fourteen. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Are we staying here for close session? No, going up?
We're going upstairs.
We are now back from closed session at ten oh two. Are there any reportable action?
Council met in closed session on item number fourteen, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, and no further business. I adjourn the council meeting at ten oh two.